...of the Livonia City Council. Tonight, our meeting is going to begin with the offering of the Pledge of Allegiance by Council Vice President Laura Toye. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice President Toye. Thank you all. This meeting will set the agenda for the 1,973rd regular meeting, which will be a voting meeting and take place on July 24th, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. Tonight's agenda may result in council members offering a variety of motions and approving, denying, or referral to committee of the whole. Those items will not be voted on tonight, but rather on July 24th. Is there any comments from the council to get us started tonight? Mr. McCullough?
Yeah, just a quick thing. I meant to do it during the regular. And for the millions of viewers at home, we've been awarding me and Friday Musings have teamed up to present a volunteer of the month, and Jim Crowley, most of you that live in Livonia know who Jim Crowley is. We presented him with the award paired up with Big B Coffee, and they presented him with a $50 gift card. So Jimmy, if you're watching, which I'm sure you are, congratulations. Thank you for all you do, and enjoy some coffee from Big B.
Good job, Jim. Congrats. Any audience comments? I see none. We'll get right into the agenda. Item number one is a request to barricade the city's streets from Chris Inch, Stevenson cross-country head coach, on Friday, August 18th, 2023, from 12:00 p.m. through Saturday, August 19th, at 12:00 a.m., with a rain date of August 19th on Perth Street from Stark until it deadens west of Farmington for our nighttime high school cross-country race.
That's right. Hi, my name is Mark Lozon, 19783 Gary Lane. I'm here representing Chris Inch, Stevenson cross-country coach. He couldn't make it tonight. But yeah, our event is called the Lamp Lighter Invite. We've done it the past two years. This will be our third year. It's basically a running festival for high school kids. Yeah, it's grown from 650 runners our first year to over 1,500 runners this year. 1,000, 1,500 spectators, so we'll have about 3,000 or 3,500 total participants there. It's a great event. So yeah, I'm asking a request to barricade Perth and Stark for the event.
Ms. Toye indicated she wanted to speak first. Ms. Toye?
I was just going to say, congratulations. You guys have done an awesome, awesome job with this whole event as well. So I'm going to let my dear colleague, Bizar, go ahead and make the motion, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you for all you do.
No, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a very serious question for you. If we approve this, will you make sure that Churchill wins? Just joking. I'm an old Churchill grad, so love to see the activities here in the community for the athletics and whatnot. So I'd like to offer approving on consent, if there's no objection from my colleagues.
I know in the second year, you offered a 5K for the general public, and it was a little bit, you know, more than you wanted to do. Could you do a special council segment, though, so I can just beat Mr. Donovan?
Sure.
Just a one-on-one race.
You want to get there. Get there early on Friday. We'll have a race.
Then Patriots and then Bentley need to get involved. Laura, you're going to have to get in there.
Let's do it, August 18th.
Hey, honestly, this is great. I love hearing about it every year, and I think it's one of the coolest things that happens. So, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. If you guys can stop by, please do. It's a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number two, is there any comments on that? I see none. Item number two is a block party from Carol Dobos in Nimosa Faraza to be held on... I'm sorry. Did I very miss... You can correct me here in a second. I'm sorry. To be held on Saturday, August 26th, from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Cranston Street between Scone and Perth Streets, with a rain date of Sunday, August 27th, 2023. How do I say your name?
Nimosa Faraza.
That wasn't that bad.
It's hard. I'm sorry. You can blame him.
Do the best I can reading.
You can blame him.
Tell us what this is about, ma'am.
We want to have a block party, and there's some new neighbors, so we all want to get together. We did it two years ago, but on someone's driveway. So we thought it'd be fun for them to enjoy, to ride in the street, and have fun.
Sounds perfect.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion, please?
Council President?
Yep.
All right, so I would like to point out that you guys were at the entire regular session to go through all of that. So for that alone, and then plus the fact that you can invite us to this awesome event, too.
Absolutely, all invited.
I'll be happy to offer an approving for consent.
Thank you.
Sorry for the wait.
That's okay.
We really hate to make people do that.
It was fun. It was fun.
It was fun.
I thought you were being truthful.
Did you bring dinner? No.
Is there any audience comment on item number two? You have an approving for consent. You're all set. You don't have to come back.
Thank you.
You're assured to be approved.
Please join us. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you. Item three is a request to waive the driveway ordinance requirement from Jason Rinald to allow the current driveway approach to remain in excess of seven feet. Mr. Zilinski?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Can I give you a background information before petitioner comes up here?
Sure.
So originally, the ordinance for Livonia driveways are 25 feet maximum. Unfortunately, the petitioner that's here today this evening is... His contractor he hired unfortunately did not pull the permit properly to do the driveway. The driveway is put in over the excess of 25 feet. If it was pulled, then we would have noticed. Again, we keep the maximum driveway at 25 feet. He did pull the permit after the fact and came in. Contractor did come in, pulled the permit after the fact for the driveway to be in excess of the over 20, 25 feet. I mean, he pulled the permit to do the work itself after the fact, but we would have caught it prior to this information. But I just wanted to bring that information to you prior to him coming to speak. And again, he lives at the corner of Susanna and Mason, where there is some sidewalk work being done and ramps. We got to be careful. Sometimes, too, we have driveways that are over a certain length that we can't put ramps across the street because a handicapped person cannot go into a driveway. Also, in the future, the reason why we have the 25 feet is we have 38,000 homes. If we have people putting runways of driveways that are 40 feet, 50 feet, and we have to do water main breaks and replace those, it gets very expensive. But I just want to give you some background information. We told him that the best course of action would have the city council members, there's seven of you, decide his fate. But I wanted to give you some information in the background, so thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Come on up to the podium. Tell us your name and address, please.
Jason Rinald. I'm at 37912 Mason, as he stated, Mason and Susanna. One of the new houses in the Grand Reserve, new housing developments that are happening in the middle of the Castle Gardens. So when we moved in, we have a three-car garage, which is not very common in Livonia. A lot of garages are much smaller. We have a small driveway on our property as well. And to get my truck over and over to the third car bay, I found myself driving off the driveway continually because of not being able to see where the driveway was starting to curve over at and trying to squeeze over. So when I was having my landscaping put in at the house, I asked, you know, is there anything we can do with the approach here to make the approach the same width as, you know, the rest of the driveway here so that I can just pull out my driveway? And so he said, yeah, sure, we can go ahead and do that. I do that all the time. Little did I know that he didn't pull a permit on this. I was informed later on this year when the city inspectors had come through, and they had made mention that my driveway, you know, exceeded the width that it's allowed to exceed, and that a permit wasn't pulled for the expansion that was done on it. And so I contacted my company right away that did the work, and I said, hey, what are you doing here? You didn't get a permit for this. So they went ahead and got the permit to get to the maximum of the 25 feet. But the width of my driveway is 31 and a half feet down at the approach there. So if you really go from the 25-foot width and you kind of cut it on an angle, so it's 25 feet at the curb and 25 feet at the sidewalk, it amounts to like 6 and 1/2 feet at the curb and like a couple feet up at the sidewalk area. So a little tiny triangle in my driveway that we're talking about having to cut off of the driveway now and get more sod put in and yada, yada, yada. Obviously, it's not super, you know, it's not going to impede my driving out the driveway considerably, but you know, the work is already done on this. I was hoping that I could just keep what I have on the driveway. It would look kind of funky. I talked to my neighbor. They didn't see any reason why we would need to, you know, chop this way. Like you said, I'm not trying to put a runway in my house. I'm just trying to have my approach match with my driveway.
I think you should have worn your, you know, apron and chef hat.
Oh, yeah. You think so? I would have helped.
We were recently in a dance recital together, and this is when he brought this to my attention. So there's no bearing on it. Mr. Barr?
Can you tell me again what the address is, please?
37912 Mason. You're probably not going to see much.
Because it's new. But it's actually, it's not so much your house that I want to see, but I just wanted to...
Oh, yeah. The reason why I even thought to do this was that there's like four other houses in the Castle Gardens area that have driveways that exceed that width even. And so when I saw that, I'm like, whoa, I would think that I should be able to do this.
You live right on my elementary school baseball field.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Through the... No, 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 you're fine. No, or through the chair to Todd. Todd, when we have these width requirements, I'm assuming, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm assuming the primary interest in that is uniformity as a neighborhood, right? Or is there something else that I'm missing?
As you know, it's a brand-new house. We want to set a precedence. Unfortunately, you know, there's 30, some homes in there. Everyone starts widening the driveway, then where do we stop? The key thing is we would have caught it at the beginning, the permit, if it was pulled. It's after the fact, and again, that's why we want to bring it to city council. I've been here 15 years, almost 15 years. This is the first time we want to, again, it's a result of change of the ordinance, and we're asking, we thought the best venue was to take it here, but we would have caught it early on. If it was, if the permit was pulled, we would have said no, 25 feet, then he would have had to go above on the sidewalk above that to do that.
So back to the petitioner. I'm looking at Google Maps here, and it actually does show your house.
Yeah, it just recently started showing it on the...
Yeah, but the driveway, the driveway doesn't match the shape that's in our packet. Was the driveway constructed, and then did you add some things to widen it?
Yeah, it was, it was, they made it straight out.
Okay, and you probably had that in all your story, and I just didn't register until I saw the picture.
Right. I wasn't sure if you guys had gotten that picture.
They originally did the driveway, and then you had a contractor come out to actually widen the driveway, and that's when you discovered.
Yeah, they just made it straight out, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. To, through the chair to Mr. Zilinski. So I'm looking at this aerial map that is in our packet, and the area that the petitioner's coming for us is this little red mark that's kind of shaded in for us. And from my understanding, the resident can widen their driveway. I'm not sure if there's a width requirement there above the sidewalk on their side. They can widen it just about as wide as they want almost?
That is correct. They can widen as much as they want, but they got to make sure they don't adversely impact the neighbor for drainage. We can't have a higher curb if they're doing concrete. They can't have a higher elevation to put drainage on somebody's property, as you know. But they can be able to turn around further if they want to on their private property, but most people, in their situation, trees or fence, things that may mail out or not.
Absolutely. And then what we're talking about is the actual approach portion where the resident has to seek a permit, and then engineering will go through their process to make sure that they meet those requirements.
Yeah. Our goal is to make sure they don't bury any utilities that we need to get to, sanitary, a water main, a gas shut-off, any of that stuff. That's why we're out there. And make sure, protecting the resident, make sure it's six inches thick, not four inches or two inches, and making sure they're getting the proper information so we do a form inspection.
So if council were to not approve this, what would happen?
He'd have to take out the seven, 6 and 1/2 feet thereof.
So the resident would have to pay to take that 60?
That is correct.
Or hopefully the contractor that did this work.
That is correct.
I think that's all there is for now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Toye?
I'm going to offer an approving. Gentleman, I think, had good intentions. I don't think he was trying to be whatever about it, and welcome to Livonia.
Actually, I've been here for 21 years already.
Well, still welcome.
Mr. Barr?
Are the other homes in that neighborhood that's going up, are many of them three-car garages, or is yours kind of an anomaly?
The one right next door to us that just went up, they don't have the roof on or anything. That one's got a three-car.
Okay. And then, I don't know by chance, your neighbor across the street and to the west, across Susanna Street, have you by chance gone over and measured his driveway?
No.
I'm totally eyeballing it here, but it looks to me like that existing driveway is probably about the width that he's looking for here, and so I'm just...
As you know, Mr. Barr, just like anything new, we have to be conforming, just like the mailboxes, the brick mailboxes. If somebody sees something new, I have to do the right thing. But again, you guys are the voice that will make that decision. We just want to make sure, a new house, we got to be compliant, because we have four developments at 35 homes. At the end of the day, we got to keep in compliances. And again, we appreciate your vision or your, you know, opportunity to seek it. I felt bad for the gentleman. He's been very nice. He went and got the permit. I just, we're at a point now where we got to keep it 25 feet and up to the city council to make that final decision.
Yeah, I totally understand, and I appreciate holding standards, and you don't want to, you don't want to be a pushover and people go, oh, they just let everybody go. And yet, it does seem like this is a mercy rejoicing against judgment situation. So, thanks.
So just for a little bit more clarification, the first time that he contacted me in regards to this, we didn't know that we were in the same dance class. But also, he actually indicated that he had to come before council in regards to this. And I told him, no, you don't. We don't do these kind of things. And then at a later time, we re-initiated the conversation. It turns out, it is our responsibility.
Mr. President, if I could, it's kind of an unusual situation, and our original thought was go to the ZBA, but that doesn't, that's not on his property as such. The ZBA has no jurisdiction over it. So we had talked about it quite a bit, is what can we do? Because we all felt bad for the situation he was in. So we thought, and not, and we don't want to establish precedent on this, that this would be, for this particular case, this would be the best forum for it. And the law department has no objections to this at all. That's why we kind of brought it forward. We just want to make sure that in the future, everybody understands that there is a 25-foot maximum, and that probably should not be a waivable requirement. But this is an unusual situation, and once in a while, justice has to be done.
Tell all your neighbors not to do this.
I hope you're putting a basketball court in. You think we can give like a little abbreviated version of our dance?
You have an approving for consent. Is there anybody here who'd like to comment on this? There is not. You're all set. You're free to go. It's all but a shirt to pass.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, item number four has been requested to be removed by the petitioner. We'll move on to item number five, a request to approve quarterly budget adjustments from the Department of Finance for the first and second quarter of 2023 fiscal year budget. Mr. Slater?
Good evening, council. There's just one item that we're asking for your consideration of approval tonight, and it's the budget adjustment necessary to reflect the $500,000 MEDC grant that we receive for tree planting and neighborhood improvements.
Can I have a motion from the council?
Motion.
Mr. Morgan? Motion for approving on consent?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barr?
We don't have to belabor this tonight, but I am curious, just looking at how this is being allotted in the budget. I remember when this was presented to us, you can tell me if I remember incorrectly, but I remember it, what was talked about was the computer software for like the tree inventory and that kind of stuff. And I'm looking at this, and I see that's about 17% of this grant.
That is part of this.
What is all this miscellaneous? Do you have an idea of what some of those things are?
Yeah, so the software is part of this also, and that did come before you for the treekeeper inventory. The miscellaneous, so half of this is the expense side, the other half is the revenue side. The state grant miscellaneous is the portion of the grant that's going into the, actually, you have the two line items that stay, state grant miscellaneous, that's the $500,000. That's the revenue side of it. Do you see that? There's...
I see $319,000 for state. What, how am I misreading this?
And go down to the, under the Community Recreation Fund.
Yep.
There's a state grant miscellaneous, $181,000.
Right.
So the $319,000, the $181,000 combined is $500,000.
Oh, I see. Those are just the only two line items. I understand. Okay. Those are the two line items that are affected by this.
Those are the revenue side of it. The other items on here are the expense side of it. So we have to budget increase in revenues, and we budget the increase in expenses.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have an approving for consent. Any audience comments on this matter? Item five? I see none. We'll move on to item number six, a request to approve hourly rate increases from the Department of Civil Service for grant classifications of bus driver and dispatcher.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to ask for an increase for the pay rates for our drivers and our dispatchers for bus driver and the classification as dispatcher, too. For the drivers, it's a pretty big increase, but a necessary one. We currently have 14 drivers, and our optimal number would be 20. The increase is a little under $4 per hour, but it is a percentage increase of about 28.5%. This is so that we can attract some new talent, retain the people that we currently have.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toye?
You know, we discussed this a little bit in one of the committees that I was in, and I think I chair upstairs, and I know the councilman Morgan and others were there. And it's definitely necessary. I think Councilwoman McIntyre brought it up initially, so I applaud you for tackling that.
No, thank you.
I'm going to ask for an approving for these dear people that drive these buses all over Livonia, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else from council, is there any audience comment on that? Item six is approved on consent.
Awesome.
Nope, you got another one. Item seven is a request to approve advanced salary entrance step for the Department of Civil Service for the incoming library director. Ms. Libel?
Good evening. Typically, we're allowed to start someone at step three per the 1982 compensation plan. However, under section 5.1, there is a provision to allow us to start someone at a higher rate if their experience and abilities are commensured or above the qualifications we listed, and if there's also some extreme difficulty in the hiring market. We went out on a national scale. We competed against bigger cities, Kalamazoo and Dearborn. We came out with a great candidate. She has a wide variety of experience, including facilities management, project management. She kind of rounded out the whole spectrum of what we were looking for in a candidate. So we're asking if we can start at step four. It is approximately 4% up, increase over the starting step of, excuse me, over the starting step of step three. However, it's still budget positive for us. It's a pickup, because we are currently budgeted for 23 and 24 at step five.
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Ms. Libel, for being here tonight. I do appreciate the creativeness in trying to recruit top talent to come to our community, especially for a department head position. My question is, is who decides that the step is warranted? Is that a, is it a decision amongst the commission and the PRC, I believe it is? Or is that just your decision, or is it the mayor's decision? Who thinks, who decides that's okay?
In this case, it goes first to the library commission. The library commission approved that, and then from the library commission, it gets approved by the civil service commission, just in keeping with the structure of wages. And then from there, we come here to ask you for your blessing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
I see none. Any public comments? When's the new start date?
Her start date will be right at the end of August. She had a couple of big projects she wanted to wrap up in East Baton Rouge.
Is this going to make you feel more comfortable having...
I think that it's, it'll be nice to hear some drawl, but she's originally a Livonia resident, from this area. And her family is still here.
Well, maybe she picked up a little bit of it, right?
Well, that's going to bring back some crawfish.
She's got quite an impressive resume and a significantly bigger system.
She's a really great candidate. She'll bring it for us.
Very good.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, item number eight is a request to enter into an agreement between the Charter Township of Canton and the City of Livonia from Mr. Ted Davis, our director of Parks and Rec, for reimbursement of day-pass use of Jack Kirksey Recreation Center by Summit on the Park members, beginning August 1st, 2023, and ending five days after the city receives reopening notice of the summit pool. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council President Jolly. Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation, which we're asking council to approve is an agreement between Canton Township and the City of Livonia, allowing summit members to utilize the Jackie Kirksey Recreation Center. To put it simply, we're going to keep track of summit members utilizing the facility. We send Canton Township a bill. They submit, these are all based upon, you know, they submit reimbursement, all based upon, you know, rates that have already been approved by city council. So their pool is down approximately three months. That's what we're asking for, simply so they could utilize a pool.
Mr. Chair.
I'm happy to answer. Any questions council might have?
If I can say to Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis, are we just being good neighbors, correct?
We are being good neighbors, but we're not giving them a deal. We're simply making it a little easier for their members to utilize our facilities and not have to pay an extra fee.
I would never expect that from you, sir. I would never expect that from you, sir. I'll offer an approving. If there's no other objections, I will offer consent.
Did the Parks and Rec commission vote on this?
They did not vote on this.
I'm just surprised that we have to vote on this, to be honest with you.
It's an agreement. It's a legal agreement.
There's a statute, intergovernmental agreements have to be approved by the legislative branch.
Okay.
So that's why I was brought to the council.
Sounds good. Mr. McCullough?
Mr. Davis, quick question, kind of relating to the pool, but do you have any idea when our current pool is going to be back online?
Our current pool?
It's been shut down a little, hasn't the...
It was shut down for one day due to HVAC problems, yes.
Because I was waiting in line.
It's always the telephone game.
And then the other question I do have is, do you know, how much per member are we going to be billing Canton for?
If they're Livonia residents, they'll be billed the adult resident rate, so the youth resident rate. If they're non-residents, they're billed the appropriate non-resident adult or non-resident youth rate.
That's great. I think it's a great idea.
It's a win for them and no, no real extra work for us, so we're happy to help.
Mr. Barr?
Ted, do we have an estimate as to how many people will be using this?
No. I, I, I really do not think very many will take advantage.
I don't either. I just didn't know if you had some sense of, okay, thanks.
Did we have anything similar when our pool was down?
When our pool was down, we did have a reciprocal agreement with the YMCA. We were looking for options that were closer to us. I'm not really sure, you know, at the time, how viable sending members to Canton would have been. I don't believe sending Canton, you know, summit members here, I'm not, I do not believe this amenity is going to be that well-used, but it's an option for them and we're happy to help.
Got to get those laps on.
Possibly. I think we might see families on the weekend, you know, that we're used to going to the summit to utilize the pool with the kids. They might come. I think more than maybe even lap swimmers, but lap swimmers, that's potential as well.
Thank you, sir. Do you have an approving on consent?
Thank you.
Is there any audience comments? I see none. And we'll go to item number nine, a request to approve the holiday parade and tree lighting